Which I see we do have some recording icons, so I think we're going forward with that. So that's good. So we're all set to go. So I'm going to start over mainly for the benefit of the recording, since you've all heard this before, but let me just repeat. My name is Alan Lilly. I'm the presiding hearing officer for the State Water Board's Administrative Hearings Office. And this hearing is being conducted today by my office on the administrative civil liability complaint that the State Water Board's Division of Water Rights Assistant Deputy Director filed on October 18th of 2019 against the Pimentel Family Trust. AHO, when I say that, refers to Administrative Hearings Office. ACL refers to Administrative Civil Liability. Helping me out today and providing a lot of excellent help, which I really appreciate, are Skylar Anderson, Kyle Woldridge, Nicole Mullen, and Megan Neist from my office, Amy Bunk, Division of Water Rights, and Carol Berkeley, Office of Chief Counsel. And obviously, it's taking the collective knowledge of all of them to get through our technical glitches, but with them, I think we're doing well. So we've gotten the appearances. I'll just repeat those for the record. I have Patrick Lewis, as I'll say, the lead attorney for the prosecution team, with Kenneth Petrizelli providing assistance. Is that correct, Mr. Lewis? You have to go off mute now, remember?
Yes, Mr. Lilly.
Okay, Mr. Petrizelli?
Yes.
Okay, good. And then the prosecution team's one witness will be Mr. Cervantes, who is now with us, audio and video. And then for the Pimentel Family Trust, we have... Now we've got an echo. So, okay. And then for Carolyn Pimentel, for the Pimentel Family Trust, who's been patiently waiting this time. Good afternoon again, Miss Pimentel. And I don't know if you're on mute. Ms. Pimentel, can we hear you?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, good. Excellent. All right. So, and I did not see anyone else. I'll just do one double check. I do not see anyone else's hands up in the participant list, so I'm going to assume that this is everybody who wants to participate today. So we've covered the preliminaries. I would like you to refer to me as Mr. Lilly and each other as Mr. and Miss so-and-so. It's not a court proceeding. We do not need to say your honor, but I do think we should keep it formal with Mr. and Miss rather than first names. So please follow that protocol. And please try to stay on mute, as most of you have, when you're not speaking, just to avoid feedback. I will ask Nicole to put up exhibits as they're being discussed, so we can all see them on the Zoom platform. As I mentioned, we are recording this proceeding, both with a video plus audio recording and an audio only, and we will post those files on the AHO's FTP site after the hearing. We do not have a court reporter. So with that, we'll go ahead and get going. Because the prosecution team has the burden of proving its case, they will go first. And before Mr. Cervantes starts testifying, I will ask him to take the oath. Just to summarize the procedure, after the prosecution team has presented its witness, Ms. Pimentel, you may ask him questions on cross-examination. And I just want to emphasize, that's different. You will have a chance later in the proceeding, after I give you the oath, to testify. But if you have any questions, anything you want him to clarify, or something you think he has not explained properly or completely, you will have an opportunity to ask him questions. Then, as I say, we'll go to you, Ms. Pimentel, to take the oath and to provide your testimony. And one of the prosecution team's attorneys, sounds like it's probably Mr. Lewis, can then ask you questions on cross-examination. After each round of cross-examination, I will ask witnesses questions if I have any follow-up questions I want to know more about. And then we will have a chance for rebuttal, if necessary, and to offer the exhibits. And then finally, to wrap up, if anyone has any additional closing arguments they want to make, they will have a chance to do that. After that, the matter will be deemed submitted, and my colleagues and I will prepare a proposed order, which, under the applicable law, we must complete within 90 days. Under Water Code Section 1114 Subdivision C, we will transmit our proposed order to the State Water Board, to its clerk, for the board's consideration. And when we do that, we obviously will transmit copies of it to both parties' representatives for this matter, and we will post it on our webpage and also send copies to everyone else who has signed up to receive emails from this office. So before we go forward, Mr. Lewis or Ms. Pimentel, does either of you have any questions about our process for today?
No, Mr. Lilly, I do not.
And Ms. Pimentel, just remember, go off mute before you speak.
No, I have no questions.
Okay, good. Thank you both. All right, so I'm going to start right ahead with Mr. Cervantes. Since I saw that you, that Mr. Lewis submitted testimony for you as the prosecution team's only witness, we'll start with you. So, Mr. Cervantes, do you swear or affirm, under penalty of perjury, that the testimony you will give in this hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, thank you. And so, Mr. Lewis, I'm going to give you 20 minutes as a maximum, which I think should be more than sufficient, for you to go through with your witness, to summarize your testimony. If we have glitches getting exhibits posted, obviously, we'll take that into account with a timeline. So please let us know, and Nicole and my office will put up the exhibits on the screen for viewing, whichever ones you request, obviously, one at a time.
Thank you. And just a point of clarification, Mr. Lilly, is that 20 minutes, does that allow for redirect also, or will redirect be in addition?
No, that's just for your direct case. If we need more, if you have redirect, that'll be more time, if necessary.
Thank you.
And just so you know, Ms. Pimentel, we'll have the same time rules for you, 20 minutes for yours, plus additional redirect, if you want that. So with that, Mr. Lewis, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly. Just to reintroduce myself for the recording, my name is Patrick Lewis. I'm the lead attorney for the State Water Resources Control Board, Division of Water Rights Prosecution Team in this matter. Mr. Cervantes is going to be our witness and provide testimony concerning the alleged violations. I'd like to call him as our witness now.
Okay, he has already been sworn, and he's here, so please proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lilly. So are we going to proceed with the hearing team administering the slides as we did in the previous hearing, Mr. Lilly?
Yes, just tell us what slide you want us to put on the screen, and we will do that. It seems to work best. I mean, this is the way the Water Board used to do it when we had hearings in person, was the Water Board staff would put up the exhibits. So I think we'll follow that same process here.
You got it. Okay, so let's have Slide 1, please.
Okay, so that's Exhibit PT 1 you would like? Or is this the PT 10, Slide 1?
It's PT 10, Slide 1.
Okay. We will get Exhibit PT 10 and go to the first page on that. Okay, we now have the first slide in Exhibit PT 10 is on the screen, so please proceed. And remember, just speak a little loudly, because you're a little soft on the microphone.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Lilly. My name is Robert Sedamontis. My testimony today supports the State Water Resources Control Board, Division of Water Rights, recommendation to issue an administrative civil liability order against the respondent, the Pimentel Family, RLT. I am the program manager of the Water Rights Enforcement Section and a licensed professional engineer. I have over 18 years of technical and regulatory experience related to water resource issues. I have been the Water Rights Enforcement Program Manager for 11 months. Slide 2, please. The California Code of Regulations Title 23, Section 920, requires persons who filed an initial statement of water diversion and use pursuant to Water Code, Section 5101, to file a supplemental statement of water diversion and use report annually before July 1st. We call the supplemental statements "annual reports" for short. Annual statements must be filed electronically by July 1st using our online report management system. Failure to file an annual statement by July 1st violates the regulation. Information included in the annual statement is critical for administering water rights and managing the state's water resources. Timely submission of this information allows the State Water Board and the public to know when, where, and how water is used, allows us to plan for drought and ensure water is being put to beneficial use. The failure to file enforcement project helps ensure that diverters provide this information through a progressive enforcement strategy using education, outreach, and, if necessary, formal enforcement. Slide 3, please. ERIMs identifies the respondent as the primary owner of statements S023607, S023608, and S023610. Therefore, the respondent was required to file an annual statement pursuant to Title 23, Section 920 of the California Code of Regulations for each statement. The respondent failed to file the annual statements by the deadline, violating the regulation. Ultimately, after extensive research and an ACL complaint, the respondent filed the annual statements on October 28th, 2019, 118 days after the deadline. Slide 4, please. This is Prosecution Team Exhibit 4. The ERIMs database ownership record identifying the respondent as the primary owner of the statements and the respondent's initial statements. The personally identifiable information of the respondent is redacted to prevent public disclosure. These documents show the respondent as the primary owner of statements S023607, S023608, and S023610 as of June 29th, 2010. Next slide, please. This is the ownership rec... or this is the initial statement for Statement S607.
And just for the record, we are now on Slide number 5 of Exhibit PT 10. Please proceed.
Thank you. Slide 6, please. This is the ownership record for Statement S608, showing Pimentel Family, RLT. Next slide, please. This is the initial statement for Statement Number S608. Next slide.
And for the record, we're now on Slide 8.
Slide 8, all right. This is the ownership record for Statement S610, showing Pimentel Family, RLT. Slide 9, please. And this is the initial statement for Statement Number S610. Slide 10, please. This is Prosecution Team Exhibit 8. The ERIMs query showing the dates the respondent filed annual reports for the applicable statements. Personally identifying information is redacted. The queries show the respondent filed the 2018 reports for all statements on October 28th, 2019. Slide 11, please. Okay, and this is the ERIMs reporting record for Statement S608, showing October 28th as the date received. Slide 12, please. And this is the ERIMs reporting date record for Statement S610, showing the reporting date of October 28th, 2019. Slide 13, please. The Division of Water Rights Enforcement Section ensures that the regulated community complies with the water right laws and regulations. The purpose of the failure to file enforcement project is to achieve this goal for annual reporting regulations through compliance assistance and progressive enforcement. The next two slides depict some of the division's work to notify the regulated community of the requirement to file annual statements, assistance in fulfilling the requirement, and outreach to compel compliance after the reporting deadline. Slide 14, please. The Enforcement Section and the Data Management Unit started collaborating in early January 2019 to notify the regulated community of the reporting requirement and provide compliance assistance. Staff hosted a water measurement workshop on January 18th, 2019, to give the regulated community an opportunity to ask questions and file reports in person. In addition, staff mailed letters to primary owners and agents reminding them of the July 1st filing deadline. This is Prosecution Team Exhibit 2, a copy of the February 15th, 2019, letter mailed to the respondent at the address of record associated with the statements in ERIMs. This letter informed the respondent of the requirement to file the annual statements by July 1st deadline, provided instructions on how to file the annual statements, and warned of potential penalties if the annual statements were not filed by the deadline. Slide 15, please. Before the July 1st deadline, division staff provided additional notice concerning the filing deadline using the State Water Board's listserv email account. We refer to this as Lyris. This is Prosecution Team Exhibit 3. This Lyris email was sent to all subscribers on June 18th, 2019, reminding them to file the requisite annual statement before the deadline and warned of potential penalties for entities that failed to file the reports before the deadline. After the filing deadline to submit annual statements passed, division staff monitored ERIMs for compliance and issued notices to the primary owner or agents that failed to file statements. Letters entitled "Final Warning: Notice of Deficiency", which is Exhibit 5, was a final warning mailed to the respondent's address of record. This notice dated August 30th, 2019, informed the respondent that the annual statement reporting was still deficient, explained that the division was prepared to issue an administrative civil liability complaint for their failure to file, and provided instructions on how the respondent could avoid potential penalty. Slide 16, please. On October 18th, 2019, with respondent's annual statement still deficient, division staff issued an HCLC to the respondent for violations of Title 23, Section 920 of the California Code of Regulations, with a recommended penalty of $2,000 per violation, with three violations totaling $6,000. Slide 17, please. In determining the proposed penalty pursuant to Water Code, Section 1055.3, the prosecution team considered the harm caused by the violations, the nature and persistence of the violations, the duration of the violations, and the respondent's corrective actions, and all other relevant circumstances. I'll discuss each of these factors in turn. Let's start with harm caused by the violation. Respondent's violations harm the orderly and efficient administration of the state's water resources. This in turn impacts other water right diverters, the environment, and the public at large. As previously mentioned, the information the regulated community includes in the annual statements is critical for administering water rights and managing water supply. Without clear and timely understanding of who is using water, where, and how much water is being diverted, and when that water is being diverted, the board is limited in its ability to perform the following seven essential functions. Number 1: Issue accurate permits or grant petitions. Number 2: Determine availability of water and likelihood a diversion may cause harm. Number 3: Conduct timely and accurate billing for water use. Number 4: Conduct fair, efficient, and accurate drought planning and measurement. Number 5: Develop in-stream flow requirements and protect public trust resources. Number 6: Build and calibrate water availability models. And number 7: Respond to and evaluate complaints of unauthorized diversions. Cumulatively, these types of water diversion and use reporting violations undermine the validity and transparency of the water right system. Now let's talk about nature and persistence of the violation. As detailed in this presentation, the division conducted extensive compliance assistance and outreach to the regulated community to ensure compliance with the reporting requirements. This included a workshop, an email reminder, a letter reminder, and a notice of deficiency warning of imminent ACLs. Notwithstanding, respondent failed to file the deficient annual statements. It was only after significant resources were expended in an effort to compel compliance that the respondent finally submitted the annual statements five days after it received the ACL complaint. Let's discuss the duration of the violation. The value of the data and information included in the annual statement for inclusion in water availability forecasting is diminished when not obtained on time. As such, every annual statement that is not filed by the deadline contributes to water resource modeling uncertainty and inaccuracy. Moreover, the length of time which respondent's violations persisted despite repeated attempts to notice the failure to file is significant. Next, let's discuss the diverter's corrective action. On October 28th, 2019, respondent filed the deficient annual statements. This is 118 days after the deadline. Considering the outreach performed by division staff to compel compliance, respondent's late filings, greater than 90 days after the deadline, is not a reasonable and prudent response to the violations. As such, respondent's corrective action does not merit a reduction in the proposed penalty. So other considerations. As part of the division's progressive enforcement strategy, respondent was encouraged to settle the alleged violation. The division proposed a three-part settlement offer to the respondent. This included paying a reduced liability of $500 per reporting violation, filing the delinquent report, and signing a waiver of the right to hearing. The settlement amount represents one day of violation, which is a 99% discount of the potential maximum liability the respondent may incur for the violations. The settlement amount is low enough to encourage voluntary corrective action, but still high enough to encourage voluntary compliance in the future. Respondent rejected this offer. In contrast, the proposed penalty, $2,000 per violation, represents four days of violation. The exact amount of resources spent by staff were not calculated for this specific case. While quantifying the number of hours spent on a specific case is difficult, staff were able to calculate the total number of hours spent on the failure to file project. Over the course of approximately 11 months, the failure to file project required the involvement of eight employees and approximately 286 hours to conduct outreach, monitor voluntary compliance, and compel compliance with the reporting requirements. The division believes the proposed penalty is the minimum amount to reasonably deter future violations while accounting for the resources spent by the Water Resource Control Board staff, compelling the diverter to file their requisite annual statements. We further believe it is the minimum amount that encourages voluntary compliance through the settlement offer. Thank you for your time. I'm now open to questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cervantes. So, Ms. Pimentel, remember to go off mute, and then please let me know if you would like to ask Mr. Cervantes any questions. And if you would like, we'll be glad to put up any of the particular slides that he went over, or any of his other exhibits. Just tell us which ones you want us to put on the screen, and we can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly. I just have one comment or question about the letter and email of August 30th. I have no record of receiving a letter, and I don't... I never saw an email on...
Okay, so Ms. Pimentel, that's getting into your testimony.
Okay.
And I don't want to be difficult, but we have to wait until I give you the oath for you to give your testimony. And we will, and don't worry, we'll definitely get to that. And I want to hear everything you want to say about that. But right now, it's... This is... If, in case you want to ask Mr. Cervantes any questions about his testimony.
Okay, my only question is, was it emailed and hard copy mailed?
Are you...
On the August 30th?
August 30th. It was emailed, hard copy, certified.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that, Mr. Cervantes. Did you say certified mail, or just first-class mail?
Certified mail. And the August 30th was the notice of deficiency, and that was certified.
Okay, and I didn't see anything in the record. Do you have something in the record showing a delivery receipt of that?
Yes.
That mailed to Ms. Pimentel? Is that one of the exhibits? I may have missed it.
It is. It is Exhibit PT 7.
Okay.
I'm sorry. You know what? I take it back. This is the August 30th, the notice of deficiency. I take it back. I was wrong, Mr. Lilly. You're on it. This was first-class mail. This was first-class mail.
I wasn't honored, I was just asking. So that was first-class mail, so there clearly is no return receipt, and you won't have any record of whether or not Ms. Pimentel received it?
That's right. Now, we mailed this letter, the notice of deficiency, to the same address that she received the HCLC, that we did get a return receipt for.
Okay, and does your... I'm... Excuse me, Ms. Pimentel, I'm just going to ask a couple of questions, then I'll come back to you. But, Mr. Cervantes, does your office keep, basically, envelopes that the Postal Service returns and says "undeliverable" or anything like that? Do you have any record, one way or another, about that? And this envelope coming back to the division?
We did not receive a return-to-sender envelope, and we do keep those and make a log of it when we get those. But in this particular case, we sent the notice of deficiency letter to the same address that we got a return receipt for from the ACL. So we know that the address is correct. We just can't confirm that she actually opened this envelope, or that it actually reached her.
All right, so Ms. Pimentel, obviously, I'll give you a chance to testify about this point after you take the oath. But right now, I'm going to ask you, do you have any other questions you'd like to ask Mr. Cervantes?
No, thank you.
All right. And then before we go on, I have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Cervantes. And I'll ask Nicole to put up on the screen Exhibit PT 9, which is your written testimony, and go to the first page of that. So if you can just give her a minute to do that. Okay. And I think she'll make it so it'll fit into the page, into the screen better. Excellent, thank you. So just really quickly on Page 1, Mr. Cervantes, I was wondering, when I read this, that the caption or the title of the document says, "Declaration of Pimentel Family, RLT", and I was confused by that, because should this really be Declaration of Roberto Cervantes?
Yes, it should, Mr. Lilly. Good catch.
Well, okay, I just wanted to make sure we have the right document, because this clearly is your declaration, not the Pimentel family's declaration.
That's right. It's my declaration in the matter of Pimentel Family, RLT.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that clarification. And then on Page 3, if we can go to Page 3, I have a question about Paragraph 6. And, Mr. Cervantes, this... The... Starting on line 16... this, the, starting on line 16, the text states that the division staff issued an email to the 6,586 Water Rights Reporting Lyris subscribers reminding them of the deadline, and your Exhibit PT 3 is a copy of that email. Does the Division of Water Rights prosecution team have any document in its records showing whether or not the Pimentel Family Trust was included in this email? This, I'll say blast email that went out to all these people.
One moment, Mr. Lilly. I'm going to scroll so I can see a better copy on my end. It's pretty small on the screen.
Of course, yeah. And if you want, we can put up Exhibit PT 3. Would that help?
Can you direct me to the line within paragraph six?
Yes, it's the last two sentences, so it's lines 16 through 19. And if you want, if you can put it up on your screen, we'll bear with you while you do that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And if you want, I can read it to you, but if you can read it yourself, that's probably easier.
Yeah, I'm reading it right now. I have my two screens up here.
No, that's fine. We'll go slowly.
So your question was, do we know if Ms. Pimentel is on our Lyris subscriber list?
Yeah, or said another way, do you have any, do you know one way or another whether she received this email?
I don't know. I don't know if she's on the list, and we don't have a confirmation that she received the email.
Okay, so I'll ask, when we get to, when she's testifying, I will ask her about that as well. Okay, if we can go forward to page seven of Exhibit PT 9, please. And again, I realize this print is small, Mr. Cervantes, but it sounds like, looks like you have a copy on your other screen, which is helpful. I'm just going to ask in general terms. This paragraph 20, which starts on line 20 and goes down to the end of the page, talks about a settlement offer. And one of your other exhibits, in fact, or excuse me, it's part of the complaint, the ACL complaint list or contains the settlement offer. My question for you is, if the Pimentel Family Trust had accepted the division settlement offer, then what would have been the new deadline or the new date by which the trust would have had to file the supplemental statements for 2018?
I don't know offhand. I would need to see a copy of the settlement agreement itself. But, yeah, so I would need to see. I don't know offhand the number of days.
Okay, let's put up Exhibit PT 1 then. That's fair enough. This was a long time ago. I can understand you wouldn't remember all the details. But I will put up Exhibit PT 1, which I think is coming up.
It looks like PT 1 is the index.
Oh, I'm sorry. Which one, excuse me, Nicole, Mr. Cervantes is correct. Put up Exhibit PT 6. Bear with us, we'll get to PT 6. And I don't know, while we're waiting for that, Mr. Cervantes, I don't know if you can access it independently on your other computer. Okay, yeah, I'm getting a message from Nicole that her computer is freezing up. So there we go. Now we've got it. Excellent. So then if you could go, Nicole, it's on that file, page two, three, four, five, six. Go to the sixth page of that, which is page four. It'll say four, that one, right there. Okay, so I'll just say, Mr. Cervantes, I read this. I'm not going to put words in your mouth. But it looks to me like there's, in paragraph 33, the settlement offer says there are three elements, A, B, and C. And A says, submit the outstanding supplemental statement of water diversion use reports within 20 days of receipt of this complaint. Does that sound right to you?
That sounds right, yes. Okay, submit the outstanding supplemental statement of water diversion and reports within 20 days of receipt of this complaint.
Okay, and the date of the, oh, the date of receipt of the complaint. So the complaint was dated October 18. So Ms. Pimentel's receipt was obviously sometime after that. I think your service was said the 23rd of October. So basically, if she had accepted the offer, then the supplemental statement would have been due within 20 days after October 23. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so in fact, excuse me?
No, I said in addition to the other two items.
No, I understand, obviously. Thank you for that clarification. I was just talking about this one thing. So, so basically, and you testified, she did in fact submit it on October 28. So she did submit the supplemental statement within the timeframe that would have applied if she had accepted the settlement offer. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, let me just check my notes. Okay, so hopefully, Nicole, your computer has unfrozen. Can you go back to Exhibit PT 9 Okay, well, it'll probably come up in a minute. I'll ask you the question, Mr. Cervantes. And if you need to, you can look at this text, but it's a pretty simple question. And it's a simple question, but I'm mystified, and that's why I want to ask you. Paragraph 20, 22, which is the very last paragraph of your declaration, states that in July of 2018, the division mailed out 14,557 notice of delinquency letters to 6,591 parties that failed to file their requisite reports for 2016 and/or 2017 reporting years. Of course, this is referring to a prior compliance period, not the one involved in this complaint. But I'm just curious, why are there so many more notice of deficiency letters than there are parties in this description?
There are some parties that have more than one water right type. So we send out deficiency letters for parties that have multiple water rights and water right types.
Okay, I, okay, I was a little confused about that. So, because I thought in the Pimentel Trust case, there was one letter for all three statements, where you're saying there actually could have been three different letters?
Well, she could have had, so hers are all statements. There are some diverters that have statements, registrations, permits, and or licenses. So we send a letter per water right type.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. That's not particularly germane to today, but I was just wondering why there was such a large difference. So I appreciate your explanation of that. So, okay, those are all my questions for Mr. Cervantes. So before we go forward, Ms. Pimentel, do you have any follow-up questions after having heard my questions that you want to ask Mr. Cervantes? And please remember just to go off mute before you speak. There you go.
My only question is, on these 14,000-plus notices of deficiency that went out, how many were prosecuted? How many people were penalized?
Objection, Mr. Lilly. Not relevant.
I think it's appropriate for her to ask that question. I think it just establishes the overall context. So, Mr. Cervantes, please answer if you know.
Sure. Unfortunately, I don't have the number offhand. I wish I did. However, Ms. Pimentel, you can search the Water Board website on the enforcement.
And please, Mr. Cervantes, don't talk to Ms. Pimentel. You're testifying to me. So please just testify.
All right, yeah, Mr. Lilly. Ms. Pimentel can find the answer and see how many cases that were brought for formal enforcement action on our website. If you search for the enforcement section webpage, it'll have the ACLs per year listed out. So I don't know offhand, unfortunately, how many we did, but we do have them all posted online.
Okay, so Ms. Pimentel, any other questions for Mr. Cervantes?
No.
All right, and then Mr. Lewis, I'll give you a chance. Do you have any redirect questions, basically within the scope of either Ms. Pimentel's cross-examination questions or my questions?
Yes, Mr. Lilly, I do have a few questions on redirect.
All right, please proceed.
Mr. Cervantes, thank you. Mr. Cervantes, where did the prosecution team obtain Ms. Pimentel's address for the August 30th and notice of, sorry, notice of deficiency August 30th letter and the administrative civil liability complaint?
Okay, division staff pulled that information from our online database called E-RIMS. And E-RIMS has the most up-to-date information that the diverter supplied to us for owner-of-record address and things of that nature.
So it is the diverter's responsibility to provide the division with the address for their residence or their agent?
Yes.
And we did, and the division obtained Ms. Pimentel's address from E-RIMS?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Cervantes, concerning the email and the the Lyris email and the February 15th email reminding diverters of their responsibility to file their annual reports, is the division required to inform diverters that they are responsible for filing timely reports?
No, the division is not required to inform the diverters of their responsibility or of the filing requirement. But we do every year participate in multiple outreach efforts to remind the diverters that deadlines are coming and what can happen, what enforcement actions can take place if they don't file on time.
So it's safe to say, in your opinion, that the division went above and beyond to inform all diverters of their requirement?
Yes.
Lastly, Mr. Cervantes, concerning the settlement agreement, is the harm, the violation infects her, affects on the regulatory program, depriving the program of information, or is it the late filing that harms the program?
And excuse me, Mr. Lewis, that question is confusing to me, I think, because it had two parts. So I think it would be good, please split it up and try to, please, I've given you a little leeway, but please try to ask questions that are not leading questions. Just ask short questions that Mr. Cervantes can answer, one at a time. Thank you.
Mr. Cervantes, what is the harm done to the regulatory program?
Sure. Late reporting deprives the state Water Board of data we need to prepare accurate water availability forecasts.
These are all, that was all my questions, Mr. Lilly.
Okay, thank you. So I think that wraps it up for Mr. Cervantes. Mr. Lewis, would you like to offer the prosecution team exhibits, I think we have one through 10, into evidence for the record for this proceeding?
Yes, Mr. Lilly, the prosecution team does request it. Prosecution team exhibits one through 10 be introduced into evidence.
All right, and Ms. Pimentel, do you have any objections to these exhibits being added to the administrative record for this proceeding?
No, I do not.
All right, so we will, I will admit those exhibits into the record for this proceeding. All right, and thank you, Mr. Cervantes. So Ms. Pimentel, you said earlier you would be testifying for the respondent, the Pimentel Family Trust. So I'm going to administer the oath, and then you may proceed. So, Ms. Pimentel, do you swear or affirm, under penalty of perjury, that the testimony you will give in this hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. All right, so you may proceed. I realize you don't have anyone to ask you questions. So you are under oath, but please provide whatever testimony you think is appropriate here. And I ask you to limit it to 20 minutes for your testimony here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lilly. I think it's important that you understand the background and the circumstances that led up to the delay in my responding to my diversion reports. We have been operating this ranch since 1970, actually a little before that, as the Pimentel family, with my husband's parents who are now deceased and with my husband, who is now deceased as well. And so I am the sole person operating this ranch with my daughter and her husband. My husband became ill in 2012 and lost his right leg. And so my daughter and her husband came back to work on the ranch and helped me with the ranch. Fast forwarding to 2016 in September, my husband became ill and was taken to the hospital in Wyrika with suspected gallbladder issues and was sent home on antibiotics. Only a few days later, he had to go back to the hospital with internal bleeding and had many blood transfusions and was ambulated to the hospital in Medford, Oregon, which is approximately 80 miles from our home. He was there for three weeks. He was there for three weeks in October and was restricted to no food, no water to let his, his digestive tract heal. They couldn't identify the source of the bleeding, but they thought if they could let it rest, that it would heal itself. And so he went, after that, he went to 10 days to recovery center to have physical therapy and regain some of his strength. He was only home for just a few days and on November 6th of 2016, he had severe rectal bleeding. He was ambulanced to Fairchild Medical Center in Wairika, 30 miles from our home. He was prepped for air transport to OHSU, which is the Oregon Health and Science University Hospital in Portland, Oregon. I followed, I followed him in my car and went there to find him in ICU where he was there in ICU for two months. He had two critical surgeries and 21 medical procedures. I stayed with him the entire time. I was working at the time. I used up my leave time from work. I donate, I use donated leave time and then I ultimately had to telework throughout this period. Throughout it all, he was totally mentally coherent, hopeful, and doctors and nurses loved his humor and his good positive attitude. On June 17th of 2017, he was reluctantly released from his medical team, by his medical team on his insistence to come home from Portland. I was his sole caretaker. He was too medically complicated for home healthcare and he didn't qualify for hospice. He was bedridden on continual drip tube feed direct to his small intestines, had a gastric drain tube from his stomach, which caused many problems and difficult to maintain. Had to have multiple medications prepared and administered through his tube feed. Had a PICC line for constant IV hydration. I had to take him to the Fairchild Hospital 30 miles away once a week to have blood draws and have his dressing changed on his, his PICC line. And all the while I was teleworking from home. This is a horrendous situation. I, I couldn't take care of a lot of the business of the ranch. My daughter took care of my mail and paid my bills. Anything that looked like a bill, she would pull out and pay. But anything else went into a box to be looked at later. So from June 17th to November 11th, he was home and I took care of him. And on June 11th, he had uncontrollable leaking from his gastric drain. He was ambulanced from home to Fairchild Medical Center in Wairika, prepped for air transport back to OHSU to be administered by his surgeons that had taken care of him there before. I followed in my car, not knowing how long we would stay this time. So I took my home laptop and also my work laptop to the hospital, drove all night, parked in the same parking garage that I had for seven months previously and went straight to the ICU to find him and he, where he was stabilized. I went back to the car to get our things out of the car to find that the windows had been broken in my car and everything had been stolen out of my car. My husband was there for five days. I was able to get the window fixed in that time so I could bring him home in the cold weather in the car. On November 21st, he went back to Fairchild with seizures and more testing and lost all ability to communicate. Gathered the family and on October 30th of 2017, he passed away. On December 15th, we had the funeral. And on December 26th, I went back to work, which was way too soon. I had lots and lots of paperwork to take care of and bookwork to do. My daughter did a great job of keeping us out of debt and, and paying bills, but other things were neglected. Other mail that wasn't bills was placed in a box for me to go through later. What time and energy I had beyond my day job and the ranch, I worked on preparing my 2017 income tax, which was completed August 7th of 2019. I'm still working on 2018 income tax. I haven't started 19 and 2020 is nearly over. The letter dated on, on February 15th, 2019, required action to report the 2018 water, water use was not discovered by me until October of 2019. I never received the 2019 August 30th letter or email. I have no evidence of that letter. I received a certified letter on October 21st. I reported my three diversion use on October 28th. And on October 4th, I requested within the specified timeframe for this hearing so that I could explain my extenuating personal work and ranch circumstances affecting this unintentional delay in reporting. I was, it was purely unintentional oversight on my part. And I rectified it as soon as I became aware. I submitted the 2017 diversion reports on July 1st of 2018 while I was at home caring for my husband. And I reported the 2019, March 23rd of 2020. I'm doing the best that I can. I'm a 73 year old widow now, working 40 hours a week because I can't afford to retire and managing our family ranch. I ask for your mercy in this situation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pimentel. I think it'd probably be good, let's take a five minute break and then we'll proceed. So whatever you do, please, nobody turn off your computers. We don't want to lose connections, but let's come back. It's 2:13 on my clock. Let's come back at 2:20 and we'll, we'll proceed at that point. So everyone can just stand up, walk around, get a drink of water and we'll come back then. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly.
Okay, it's 2:20. I see Mr. Petroselli is back. We're just waiting for Mr. Lewis. And Mr. Lewis is back. And it looks like Mr. Cervantes is just going to be back soon. So thank you, Ms. Pimentel, for your testimony. And I appreciate your explanation of the circumstances. So, Mr. Lewis, do you have any questions you would like to ask Ms. Pimentel?
Yes, I just have two questions I'd like to ask Ms. Pimentel on cross.
And please get a little closer to your microphone. I'm having a little trouble hearing you.
Sorry. Yes, I do have a few questions I would like to ask Ms. Pimentel.
All right, please proceed.
Ms. Pimentel, you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Pimentel, please go off mute and then if you have a question, go ahead. But you just have to unclick the mute button. We've lost. I don't think it's us. I think you need to unclick your mute. It's probably in the lower left corner of your screen is where the mute button usually is. You have, you have to click on that to unmute. We still can't hear you. No, you've got to, somehow you've got to click on something to unmute here. You did it before. I'm not sure what happened.
I apologize. It lost connection and I had to re-enter the ID and all of that.
Oh, that's fine. You're, you're, you're back now and I can hear and see you very clearly. So thank you.
Okay.
So did you have a question? Are you ready for Mr. Lewis to ask his questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. So, Mr. Lewis, please proceed.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Pimentel, I'm, I'm sorry for your loss and your difficult circumstances over the last few years. I just have two questions for you regarding this matter. The first is during this time that you're having this difficulty, did you think to contact the Division of Water Rights to explain your extenuating circumstances?
Actually, no, because I had, my mind was elsewhere, taking care of my husband and that was, frankly, it wasn't a high priority. I had, I had reported in the past on time and it just slipped my mind that I needed to do that until later.
And previously you'd stated your daughter and son-in-law returned after your husband's health issues to help with the ranch?
Yes.
And did they travel with you when your husband was ill? Or did they, they stayed and cared for the ranch?
Yes.
No further questions, Mr. Allen.
Okay. One moment, please. Let me just check my notes here. But spare with me. Okay, so I don't have any further, I don't have any questions for you, Ms. Pimentel. So I, and you did not submit any exhibits, so we don't have to deal with that. So first of all, I also extend my condolences. I know this was obviously a very difficult time for you. And frankly, we appreciate your taking the time to explain it to me. I think it's useful for all of us to know what your circumstances are and, and were during this difficult time. So with that, we will fit, go to the last part of our hearing, which is closing arguments. Neither of you has to submit any closing arguments. I think a lot of your arguments have been covered well with, with your testimony, but I'll start with you, Mr. Lewis. Do you want to make a closing argument today?
Yes, Mr. Lilly, I'd just like to add a few closing comments.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. First, as the prosecution team has demonstrated, Ms. Pimentel is the primary owner of the three statements. Ms. Pimentel is the primary owner of the three statements in question. As such, she was required to file the annual statements by the July 1st deadline. And she accurately represented, this is the first time in which she has had issues filing late. The prosecution team spent a significant amount of resources attempting to compel compliance. The settlement offer was offered as a last-ditch effort in order to obtain compliance. And while Ms. Pimentel did file the report after receiving Day CLC, the harm done to the regulatory program is depriving the Division of Timely Information, not depriving the Division of the information in general. It's due to this harm that the prosecution team does seek this proposed penalty. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you. So, Ms. Pimentel, you've testified very clearly, and I understand your circumstances. But if you would like to make any closing argument, now is the chance. So please let us know if you'd like to, let me know if you'd like to make any additional closing argument here.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lilly. In the documents that you have presented, it does say in there that if necessary enforcement is required. And then, as Mr. Lewis just described, that the harm was in the timely filing of the information and not necessarily the amount of water. My diversions are very small. And in the year in question and some other years as well, there hasn't been much water use at all. And one of, you know, a couple of the diversions, we don't actively divert. I know that that's a definition by the department is a little different than actually the definition of how ranchers view it. I think that I'm not actively diverting water by blocking a stream. I have a right on Johnson Creek. We've never put a tarp in that, in that water. We've never diverted out of that stream in any way. It's been used solely for stock water when it's running. And it doesn't run all year or all season through the summer anyway. So the water used is very minimal. And so it's my opinion that the harm of not reporting this was minimal because, number one, it's not that much water to start with. I did report, and it was just a matter of timing. I am sorry that the department had to go to such extenuating circumstances to inform me of my tardiness in reporting this. But I did the best that I could. I did report. I've never been late before. I don't intend to be late again. It's not that I was willfully disobeying or not trying to comply. It was strictly the unusual circumstance in my life at the time that caused this delay. And I, again, wanted to have this hearing so that I could present this to you. I didn't want to, and the information that you sent stated that I would forfeit my rights for a hearing if I took the settlement. And so that's why I didn't want to forfeit that privilege to do this. So that's why I didn't take the settlement at the time. Maybe in hindsight, I should have, but just don't bankrupt me. I can't afford, I can't afford a lot. This is a small ranch. It's a small family ranch. So please, please take mercy.
Well, and that's exactly why we have hearings, is so that people like you will have an opportunity to present your argument. So I certainly appreciate your desire to do that. And I'm glad we were able to arrange that so you could do that today. Ms. Pimentel, I know it's sensitive, but I do want to make sure I have the right year. I was taking my notes here pretty quickly. But I think you said your husband passed away on October 30th, and was that 2017?
It was 2017.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we had the right date.
Yes.
October 30, 2017. Okay, all right, well, that, and sorry, I didn't want to cut you off. I assume that concludes your closing argument here.
Yeah, well, just in, again, the circumstance of being away from home for months and months at a time. I didn't come home at all that whole time. I stayed with my husband. And so that got me behind in everything. And so that's why it has taken me, it's taken me so long to get caught up. Never been late on my income tax. I've never been late on reporting this diversion use. And so, but now because of this, I am, I'm behind. And I'm desperately trying to catch up. And it's taking me a long time to get caught up on all of these things. Even though my husband died December or November 30th of 2017, it's taken all of 18, all of 19, and half of 20 for me to, you know, start getting on my feet and getting things caught up. And I'm still not caught up. It's taking me a long time to get this done, but I'm trying.
Yes, and I did notice, I'll just say, I did notice that for all of the other years, one of the prosecution team's exhibits shows this, but your reports were timely filed for all of the other years. So I do appreciate your comment on that. It was just this one year that you were late, and you certainly explained your circumstances. So with that, unless, Mr. Lewis, you have anything else? I think we're ready to wrap up. Mr. Lewis?
No, Mr. Lilly, I do not.
All right, so thank you all very much. And thank you for participating electronically. In some ways, it's a benefit because, you know, I know for you, Ms. Pimentel, it saved you a lot of travel time. So hopefully, hopefully that benefit outweighed the challenges of participating electronically. Although I think we do pretty well with these electronic hearings. Probably not exactly as good as being in person, but I think it's pretty good. And most of all, I want to thank Nicole Mullen of my staff for organizing and getting all the exhibits up, even when her computer froze. I don't know how she does it, but she does very well. And I appreciate it, and certainly all the backup from all of the other members of my staff. So thank you all. As I say, we will get our proposed order. I don't know what it's going to say, but we will get it completed and out to the water board with copies to you within 90 days. So with that, we're done. Thank you all and have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Goodbye.